You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Like to welcome all of you to the Monday, June 11th, 2018 Fayetteville City Council Meeting. As we call the meeting to order, we'll ask that Associate Pastor Dr. Greg Perkins from the Mount Pisgah Missionary Baptist Church, he come to the diocese. Ask that all would rise for the prayer followed by the pledge allegiance.
Let us bow in reverence. God of power and mighty, wisdom and justice, through your authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. As we assemble here today with this great body of leaders of our city, assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude and let the mayor and this council and other government leaders of this city enact the laws for the people to better the lives of the people. And may they always seek the wise ways of righteous, justice, and mercy. Grant that they may be able by your power protect and lead our great city with honesty, integrity. And we ask these thoughts as we remember our service members who serve here and abroad through Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Associate Pastor Perkins. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself, your ministry? I know you, but maybe some in the audience not familiar with.
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, I'm Associate Pastor at Mount Pisgah Missionary Baptist Church. And my home church, of course, is Lewis Chapel Missionary Baptist Church. There's great work going on in the community and ministry. We are working as ministers in partnership with the city, as a member of the mayor's coffee, as well as the chaplaincy program that the city police department is putting together. We're working diligently to support our city leaders and also remembering those first responders who work in support of the city. We continue those efforts with your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for what you do. At this time, we have a few announcements. We would like to, I'd like to recognize colleague, Councilmember Larry Wright. I was blessed to attend a June 2nd program where Councilmember Wright received a very prestigious award. Do you want to tell us about it?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everyone that supported me throughout the years. I received the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award recently from Mayor Cooper, I'm sorry, Governor Cooper's office. And it's 30 years of service. And someone asked me, how did I feel about receiving that award? It was overwhelming and it was humbling to me, not looking to receive anything of that magnitude, but I always been a servant. And I say to the young people that are coming up, the best thing that you can do in life is to serve, to give of yourself. For much is given, much is required. So what we do here in the city council, we serve. And so I'm proud to be a recipient of that award that puts me in a class of those that have received it before me and I stand on their shoulders. And so thank you all for your support and your prayers for me and for this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Congratulations. Have, like to defer to Councilmember Jensen. Introduce a very special guest on the diocese with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce, and I'm gonna mess up her last name, but it is the coolest last name I've heard in a long time. It is Joyce DePompey.
DePumby.
Isn't that a cool name? That is such a cool name. And she is a rising senior at the Cumberland Polytech School. And she is gonna give us a little recap of what has been going on with the youth council. And we have a lot of the youth council here tonight that we're gonna recognize in a few minutes.
So at the end of last month, we attended the State of North Carolina Spring Convention. And we left with many awards such as the Most Outstanding Yearly Project. We got second place for the scrapbook. We also got Most Outstanding Member, which was given to Haiti Montez. And it's actually the second year we've received this award. We now hold the position of State Youth Council Secretary, which was given to Ray Vialle Mustard, which is also the second time we've received this position. And lastly, we've gotten the Governor's Trailblazer Award, which was given to Ms. Kiara Keaton. And on behalf of FCYC as well as our advisor, Ms. Crystal, we thank you for city councils' endless support.
Ms. Jensen, you have some other recognitions for the youth council?
Well, we were, they were gonna come up and give a, their speeches, their senior speeches.
Well, I'll come back to that if that's okay. All right, Council, and thank you for joining us. I had the privilege to attend your graduation, your school's graduation, and I was very impressed. Those young people graduated high school with college credits and, and some had two years of college credits, and that was very impressive. So thank you for joining us tonight. Councilmember Dawkins, you had something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanna make sure the folks know that the Skybo Road is gonna close for about a week. And it's the Aberdeen and Rockfish Railroad has informed NC DOT, it's gonna close Skybo Road in both directions near Clifdale Road next Monday at 5:00 AM for about a week. They're hoping that it'll only take five days. But I just don't want you going down Clifdale Road and see that Skybo Road's closed, or you're coming from the mall headed towards Rayford Road and Skybo Road's closed. So just be aware of that. Just wanna make you aware, other periodicals, you're gonna see it updated on, on the internet, but just don't want you being surprised. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins. At this time, we have a few certificates of recognition. I'll defer to Councilmember Jensen, and I, I guess I'll meet some folks at the podium.
Yes, sir, but I think you need to wait for a minute. What we usually do at the end of the year for the youth council is they come up and they tell you who they are, what school they went to, and what school they're gonna go to. We have the president, Rebecca Mitchell, coming up, and she's gonna give her, a few of them are gonna give a speech or two. I am so thrilled that it is packed in this house tonight so y'all can see what our youth has been doing all year long. We have got a great youth program going on. We have done this in collaboration with the county and the schools, so it is a great collaboration. Before Rebecca speaks, I'm gonna say it again, and I guess it's for the last time. Rebecca is our chairman, our president of our Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and she was the state president of the North Carolina Youth Council. So I present to you Rebecca Mitchell.
She's in District 72.
Yeah, she does, she is in Larry's district.
And, and, and Mayor, and, and audience, just wanted to say to this young lady, she knows how much I love her, she's a member of my church, we have been in Christmas plays together, and I'm just so proud of you, so keep on doing the great things. I don't see your dad out there, he's usually here, but...
He's on his way.
Huh?
He's on his way.
He's on his way. Proud of you. Proud of you.
First, can I have all the members of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council stand?
All right.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Mitchell, the outgoing chairman of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. On behalf of FCYC, I just wanna give a personal and sincere thank you for all of your continuous support of our council. Many of you have worked with me throughout the four years of me being on this council and have given me unwavering support and encouragement, advice that I know will continue to help me as I transition to college and the beginning of my career. I appreciate your many appearances at youth council meetings and events, and I hope to continue seeing you as I come back to visit during my school breaks. The Fayetteville City Council is definitely the best city council in the nation, and I'd like to reward you all with that title today. And that is because not only do you listen to the voices of the adults that come before you, but you listen to us, the youth. And you continue to show us that our voice matters and makes a difference in our community. Thank you for giving the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council a seat on the board where we can share our opportunities that our council has to offer. Thank you for allowing us to participate in formal city council meetings so we can take part in the betterment of our community. Thank you for serving as our mentors, people that we look up to as positive role models. And lastly, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today and display my appreciation for all that you have done. It has been a pleasure partnering with you as the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council Chairman. Through this partnership, I received an admirable experience that I will cherish for the rest of my life. So thank you all.
She said what she didn't say tonight.
Hi, everyone. My name is Casey Lee, and I'm the Senior Secretary of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. As constituents in the all-American city of Fayetteville, we're fortunate to see the faces that protect our country every day. And we hear the phrase "answering the call of duty" frequently. However, I would go far enough to say that each and every one of us answers the call of duty in our own way, whether that be to your own future or to your community. Two women that are sitting in this very room right now answered that call of duty that is serving our public when they decided to take this quiet new girl from El Paso, Texas, and change her into the woman standing in front of you today. Councilwoman Kathy Jensen, a huge role model to me, my neighbor, and my friend, was very persistent in making sure that I knew FCYC would be in the cards for me. Ms. Crystal then took this quiet girl that was ready to dive right in and prep me to be the best that I could be while becoming the most supportive person I could ever ask for. With influences like these two courageous women and strong women at my side cheering me on, how could I refuse? I joined my junior year and became involved in the youth council as much as I could. My senior year, I answered the call of duty in my own heart to serve and was fortunate enough to earn the position of Secretary of the Youth Council. This position allowed me to find my words and grow. Soon I found myself writing out emails, presentations, award applications, and even, even a published magazine article. I've seen how much a difference I can make just by showing up and writing, which is something I now love to do. The opportunities that I have been able to receive just from being in FCYC have been numerous. I was able to travel to many places, be exposed to issues I never knew existed, and make new connections with people from all over. Just by finding my words, as I said earlier, I was able to take what many these days used to bring other people down and instead lift someone up. I had the honor of getting to help write our award application for this year and be part of the presentation to emphasize how important being true to your own self is in a world full of teenagers constantly trying to be someone else. At the SYC conference in Goldsboro, I was able to see this hard work pay off as our council was awarded Most Outstanding Member, Women's Trailblazer Award, Second Place in Scrapbook, Most Outstanding Yearly Project, and the position of 2018 to the 2019 Secretary of the State Youth Council. As many of these seniors that are sitting in front of you can attest to, the road leading us to this moment was not easy. There are many sleepless nights, failures, rejection, and some lost friends along the way. But I can honestly tell you, standing here today, that without Ms. Crystal, FCYC, and the people sitting behind me, I would not be here today as a graduate of my high school and a graduate of the Emergency Medical Technician Course at Fayetteville Technical Community College. These people were there for me when I needed a shoulder to cry on, people to laugh with, and friends when I no longer felt welcome at my own school. So as I stand in front of you today, I would like to thank you. The work that you all do to support us as a city is monumental. Words can never fully describe the positive impact this experience has had on my life, but I hope that my words today can give you even the slightest glimpse on how many lives you all have touched just by allowing us this opportunity to grow in a professional setting where we learned how to pick ourselves up from failure and how to succeed in the strongest of ways. I would like to thank you for all you do for the city. I would like to thank my council for always supporting me and those two amazing women I mentioned earlier, along with my family, for always pushing me to reach my fullest potential. Lastly, I would like to thank you for allowing me to answer the call of duty and give back to my home and my community, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Thank you.
All right, last one, we promise.
Um, excuse me. Before Jordan speaks, I want everybody in the audience to know that Jordan went to Washington, I think it was your junior year?
Sophomore.
Sophomore year, and got on the National League of Municipalities Board. So he was sitting with people from all over the nation that your Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council was so impressive up in Washington DC that they picked him. And I think if I'm not mistaken, you were the first one from North Carolina, came right out of Fayetteville. And he does go to Pine Forest.
She kinda stole some of my thunder, I'll talk about it in a little bit.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I wanted to make, I wanted to make sure, I should've known.
I appreciate that. Okay, well, obviously, good evening. My name is Jordan Claiborne, and I'm a senior at Pine Forest High School. I've been in FCYC for four years due to my first year that I spent sneaking into the meetings as an unsolicited freshman. As soon as I could join, I joined. Late sophomore year, I applied to be on the Youth Education and Families Board of the National League of Cities. Come January 2017, I found myself really working with elected officials such as Mayor Pugh of Baltimore, Congresswoman Marsha Fudge, and Councilman Matt Zone of Cleveland, Ohio. Not only that, but rather than working on local issues, I was working on the national issues such as economic mobility, national budget analysis, and even gun violence. I couldn't believe it. There I was on a board of 20 elected officials and three other youth representatives making national change. This has led to many opportunities and open doors, doors such as being able to help my city with creating the Action Plan Pathways for Prosperity, speaking at the opening ceremony of National City Summit, and also traveling across the map making connections that will better help me when I make a profession out of changing the world. In the common society, it is very hard being a youth leader, reason being that most adults constantly ridicule those youth for civically engaging themselves. Luckily, and I think I speak for FCYC as a whole when I say this, we are fortunate enough to live in an area with a city and county government that is supportive of both youth affairs and youth engagement. We live in that not-so-common society. This has led to many opportunities for us youth, and not only that, but it has also been beneficial in many ways to both our city and county government. For that, we are appreciative, and we recognize that not all youth leaders get the same opportunities that we are afforded. In fact, due to our many opportunities, FCYC has quickly built a reputation that is not, that is now, that is known, I'm sorry, for its heavy community involvement and astounding representation of Fayetteville's youth, if I do say this myself. Without the wisdom of former Mayor Nat Robertson, without the support of Fayetteville-Cumberland Parks and Rec, without the amazing guidance and intense advocacy from our city council, without the big brother bond of our county commissioners, without the thousands of youth we have made friends with over the years while attending these conferences, and most importantly, without Ms. Crystal, we definitely would not be the council that we are today. So whoever picked this amazing woman to do the job she does, you made the best decision of not only your lives, but of the lives of every touch she has, of every youth she has touched and will continue to touch. With that being said, I pray that the city council and county continues to support her and the council, not only with funding, but with guidance that they continuously offer. I pray that the youth members and their parents stay on top of attendance and remain strong advocates for this strong organization. And most importantly, I pray that more youth get involved with Fayetteville-Cumberland Youth Council, not only to get a better representation of Fayetteville, but also to multiply the amount of volunteer work we are able to do in our community. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chris, you had something?
Mr. Mayor, is Ms. Crystal Glover out there this evening with, with the youth council? Would she stand up? Is she out there?
Hey, girl.
This is the young lady that mentors these young people. Now, I wanna do one more thing.
Hang up, Crystal.
Would the members of the youth council stand one more time?
Standing at the back. Oh, wow.
And I ask them to stand again because I do not want it to go unnoticed. I want y'all to look at their dress code. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, they're gonna come up and tell you where they went to school and where they're going to college, and then if y'all could just come and shake hands with everybody, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Mitchell. I went to school at 71st High School, and I will be attending North Carolina Wesleyan College.
All right.
Hello, I'm James L. Thomas III. I'm currently attending Pine Forest High School, and I will be attending North Carolina A&amp;T.
Aggie pride.
Hi, my name is Tatiana Laregui. I just graduated from Cross Creek Early College High School, and I'll be attending Fayetteville State University.
Crook pride.
Hi, I'm Rochelle Duncan. I'm graduating from Grace Creek High School, and I will be attending the University of North Carolina at Charlotte.
Hi, I'm Jalen Campbell, and I'll be attending Morehouse College.
Oh, Morehouse.
My name is Kiara Keaton. I attended Cross Creek Early College High School, and I'll be attending Fayetteville State University.
My name is Nicholas Momon Cunningham. I attended Cross Creek Early College High School, and I'll be attending East Carolina University.
My name is Melissa Smith. I attended Pine Forest High School, and I'll be going to the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill.
We won't hold that against you.
My name's Jordan Claiborne. I, I graduated from Pine Forest High School, and I will be attending the better North Carolina school, North Carolina State University.
We won't, we won't hold that against you.
My name is Lauren Lowe. I will be graduating from Westover High School, and I will be entering in the Army.
Hi, my name is Casey Lee. I'm graduating from Pine Forest High School, and I'll be attending North Carolina State University.
Hey, pretty girl.
All right, let's give the youth council another round of applause. That is, I'm very encouraged about the future of our city. Yes. Uh, Councilmember Jensen, that concludes your matter?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're very proud.
Absolutely. Abs, at this time, if we could have Ms. Olivia Watler, and I think Commissioner Evans, were you a part of the Caribbean American Heritage? Yes, Mr. Evans, I know he was involved with this, and he'll present this to recipients.
Okay, we're here to read a proclamation from the mayor, Caribbean American Heritage Month. Proclamation reads, "Whereas Caribbean American Heritage Month celebrates the incredible contributions of the Caribbean Americans to the fabric of our nation, and we pray tribute to the common culture and bonds of friendship that unite United States and the Caribbean countries, and whereas the city thrives as a community much in part to the vibrancy, talent, faith, and values of Caribbean Americans. For years, Caribbean Americans have enriched our society and added to the strength of Fayetteville. Whereas during the month of June, we also honor the friendship between the United States and Caribbean countries. United by our common values and shared history, we celebrate the rich Caribbean history and the many ways Caribbean Americans have helped shape this community and nation. Now therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the eleventh day of June in the year of 2018 in honor of Caribbean American Heritage Month."
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, and all of the, those recognized. Counsel, at this time, we will move to item 5.01, is the appointment of the candidate for city council District 2. We'd like to ask a few things of the audience. Throughout this process, you all have been incredible, you've been very professional. And to all 10 of the applicants, we wish we could really choose all 10 of you without adding 10 additional district seats. But tonight, the council has been faced with a, with a very tough decision, and I would like to commend the council for how we've dealt with this very difficult situation over the last 90 days. Tonight, a member will be appointed. We have a process that I'll explain shortly. Like to, okay, and I'll circle back to that. We ask that as we go through the process, that we ask that you refrain from any comments, applause, loud outbursts, just to show respect to the process. And at the conclusion, the council will have to do two orders. One, they will make a selection where the members, the applicants have been applied, and the applicant that receives the most votes from the council members will be officially selected. And step two will be the official appointment by this board to make them an official member of the Fayetteville City Council to fill the vacant seat of District 2. So there'll be a two-step process, and if you hear two separate m-... So there'll be a two-step process, and if you hear two separate motions, that is what is happening. Um, the names have been prepared in alphabetical order, and so there have been three rounds that are placed on the sheet, the clerk has a copy of this sheet, the names will be called in alphabetical order, votes will be taken in support of, no one on this diocese tonight will be voting in opposition to, it will be in support of whoever your candidate of choice is. At the end of that, if there are, there's a tie, and they're not a clear, uh, five-vote recipient in round one, then the top two will move to round two, until that process completes itself. And so, at this time, before we prepare to do that, item 4.0 is the approval of the agenda, uh, I'll look to council for action with that, with some amended changes.
Second. With changes.
Yeah, with the changes. Okay, do you want to articulate the changes, uh, council members? I think the only other one was the budget, uh, item being moved up.
Right, 10.3.
We're gonna move 10.3 up to follow 5.01.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion to approve the agenda with the change of moving item 10.03 to, uh, item 5.02. Yes, sir. And there's a second by, the motion was by Councilmember Arp, there's a second by Councilmember Hare. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for, for votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous? Item 5.01, the appointment of the council members, of the new council member. All right, counsel, first name will be Ms. Patricia Bradley. Those who are voting in favor of Ms. Bradley, ask for your green buttons at this time. Okay, you got that? Okay, madam clerk, Ms. Bradley receives three votes. Councilmembers Wright, Colvin, and Hare. Wright. Next applicant is applicant Lynn Brown. Madam Clerk, there are no votes for that applicant. Applicant Vernell Cruz. Madam Clerk, there are no votes for applicant Vernell Cruz. Applicant Dan Cullerton. Madam Clerk, there are four votes for Mr. Cullerton, councilmembers Crisp, Arp, Moan, and Dawkins. Okay? Applicant Mary English. Madam Clerk, there are no votes for Ms. English. Applicant William Gothard. Madam Clerk, there are no votes for Mr. Gothard. Mr. Philip McCordle. McCorkedale, my apologies. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, there are no votes for Mr. McCorkedale. Mr. George Mitchell. Madam Clerk, there are no votes for Mr. Mitchell. Ms. Sharon Moyer. Madam Clerk, there are two votes for Ms. Moyer. Because, because each council member was given one vote per round, uh, Mr. George Turner, there are no votes remaining, uh, to be awarded to Mr. Turner. So, the end of that process, uh, Mr. Dan Cullerton received four votes, and Ms. Patricia Bradley received three votes, takes a number of five votes to win the selection process, so we'll move to round two with only Ms. Bradley and Mr. Cullerton. All right, counsel, second round. As for any who are supporting applicant Patricia Bradley. Madam Clerk, that is three for Ms. Bradley, Wright, Colvin, Hare. And applicant Dan Cullerton. Madam Clerk, that is councilmember Crisp, Arp, Moan, Jensen, Dawkins, and Waddell. Six, Mr. Cullerton is the selected representative for District Two.
Mr. Mayor, as the last council member to have gone through this process and to be appointed, and what an honor that was, it's my honor to, uh, make the motion that the council appoint Dan Cullerton as the new city council representative of District Two, effective twenty-five June 2018.
Second is a motion by councilmember, uh, Arp, and a second by councilmember Crisp. Uh, discussion on the motion, I know, counsel, we had discussed discussion phases, any that would like to do so, I will, I will start it off. Uh, counsel and the public, like to thank you, uh, for your efforts, I'd like to thank all ten applicants, it takes a tremendous amount of will, uh, to volunteer for this process, and so all of you ought to be commended. Uh, tonight, we were only able, and were given one selection, and we have to go with the will of the council, so this next action will be the appointment of the selection that the council made through the democratic process, and so, like to congratulate Mr. Cullerton, and let you know that immediately following this process, that you are a member of this team, as far as we're concerned, and so, um, you're a member of this body, sir, and we welcome you to it, and we look, look forward to working with you for District Two. Uh, we do have a few follow-up comments, I see councilmember Wright, and then Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to congratulate, congratulate Mr. Cullerton on his selection as councilman for District Number Two. I think it was a fair process, and we as the council, regardless of who I said before, was selected, uh, we're going to embrace that person, uh, in this, uh, case, it's Dan, and so we welcome him to, uh, the council. Um, and as I said before, we're not gonna be able to please all the people, but, uh, I thank God for America in a democratic process, and I think it was a long process, uh, and I think it was a fair process, but at the end of the day, um, we have to move forward in this city, and, uh, I think we, uh, we're able to do that, looking forward to service. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Wright. Uh, councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, to welcome our, our new addition to our group up here. Um, I think that I, I really have to tell everybody that we did hear the people, we did hear you when you came to the public forum, we did hear, um, my first vote was for Sharon Moyer, my vote has not changed, it did, and I did support Sharon, was my first choice, and, um, Mr. Cullerton knew that, and, um, but I welcome you, and I am excited to see what's gonna happen down on B Street, and I'm ready to take that walk with you, and I know that the residents are gonna support you, and they came out for you, and I know the Massey Hill, um, the Massey Hill community is very excited too, and I know that you are gonna do good by the people of District Two. Welcome.
Thank you, councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin, much like Ms. Jensen, I did cast one vote and then have to change my position, and I want to share with the residents of District Two the reason for that. We listened very intently to what you were saying in both of the meetings, and one of the things that I heard repeatedly in the meeting, outside of who you wanted, was what you wanted. You wanted somebody who could relate to and understand what your concerns were in District Two. I firmly believe that Sharon Moyer was not only a good candidate for that, that reason, but also, also I believe that she was an excellent compromise for us as a council, for us to be able to demonstrate that we could meet everybody's objectives in one package. However, since we were not able to do that, I do support Mr. Cullerton, I watched you work during the campaign, and my head is off to you for the work that you've done, and I hope that you will sit in this seat and you will serve with integrity, and you will never make me doubt my vote. Thank you for stepping up to serve, we appreciate you, and I salute you for earning our appointment.
Thank you, councilmember Waddell. Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Citizens and our new council member, I, I guess I pretty much the only one can say I've had the honor of serving this council longer than anyone on this diocese, I've been through all of the nominations for, for new members, and we welcome you, though I did make my first choice on who I wanted, now it's time for us to move forward, and it's always gonna take a huddling together, uh, with everyone, but especially the most simple is, is the number six. Uh, but we're all gonna have to huddle together to, uh, get things done, and, uh, I welcome you, um, to the council.
Thank you, councilmember Hare. Councilmember Crisp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cullerton and audience, I want to remind you of something, and that's very poignant and very important. I can remember vividly when Doctor was sworn in as a state senator here at Mansfield in the John D. Fuller Center, and Representative Glazier gave him the charge, and I'll give you that charge right now. He said to Senator Mansfield, "When you get up there, don't be so concerned about keeping the job that you failed to do the job. When you get up here, do the job. Do the job." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Crisp. Uh, councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank all the candidates, uh, who submitted their names and ran, um, that's, that's tough work, um, I know how you feel, I lost the first time, um, and remember, elections come around every two years. I want to congratulate the Cullerton family, they are a family, they're a hard-working family, and, uh, very impressive, um, but, uh, councilmembers-elect Cullerton, just know, you've got a large district, you've got B Street, you've got Haymount, across the river, you've got Mayor Mabel Smith, um, you, you've got, you've got challenges in front of you, in Massey Hill, you've got Mayor Bill Passick, who's sitting right over there, so, I, all I can tell you is get as much rest as you can, enjoy this night, 'cause tomorrow, your work begins, so congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, all right, I'd like to thank all of you, and we will, uh, have a five-minute recess to allow, oh, we need, do need to vote, yes, sir. All right, so entertain a motion at this time to, uh...
The motion's on the floor with a second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that was the discussion, get it together, Mr. Mayor, all right. Uh, all right, counsel, I'll look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, nine to zero, to make the official appointment of Mr. Cullerton. All right, we'll recess for a five-minute break. (applause)
That ain't covered him though.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, right.
At the end of the day...
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's over, it's done deal. It's a done deal.
So, we'll call the meeting back to order. Item 5.02 is the item of the budget that was moved up from item 10.03. Mr. Manager?
Um, good evening, uh, Mayor and members of council. Um, the presentation that I'm going to give tonight follows the presentations that we've had before, including the public hearing. At the conclusion of the presentation, uh, if council is ready, staff would recommend that the council adopt the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 budget ordinance, the accompanying fee schedule, and fiscal years 2018, 2019 strategic plan, and fiscal years 2019 to 2023 capital and technology improvement plans, capital project ordinance 2019 dash one through 2019 dash 14, and capital project ordinance amendments 2019 dash one through 2019 dash 11, and 2018 dash sixteen, sixty-five as presented. And to explain all of that, I'm going to go through the presentation. Um, but before I get started, as I should always do, I'd like to give a lot of thanks to our budget and evaluation staff, um, who are here. And Tracy, if you and your staff could stand, um, for their hard work. Um, and we have three of the five members here with us tonight. (applause) And I'd also like to thank all of the members of the senior management team as well, who, um, by and large, made their jobs easy by getting things in on time so that we could present it to the city council.
Mr. Hugh, I just wanted to, um, ask Council for a consider. Can we not take action until after? Because I think we have a speaker signed up to speak on the public, uh, hearing section, uh, related to the budget. Is that correct?
We do. Mr. Reinhold was, uh, speaking about a variety of things, I think primarily the cemetery fees. Um, you did hold your public hearing at the last meeting, but it's council's wish completely if you would like to do that.
Okay.
Um, in the interest of time, I will try to go as fast as possible, but slow me down if, if I go too fast, because I do believe one of our members have to, um, get on the road in a little bit.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
So, with that being said, um, Mayor, uh, Colvin, um, the city manager's budget was presented and released to the city council on May 4th. It was presented to the council formally at your May 14th meeting. And the document has been available for public review in the office of the city clerk and on the city's website. The council has deliberated on the recommended budget at three budget work sessions. Those were held on consecutive Thursdays, the 10th of May, 17th, and the 24th of May. The public hearing, um, on the budget was held Tuesday, May 29th. And the summary document of council's consensus direction for changes to the recommended budget was distributed on June 1st and updated on June 4th. The proposed budget ordinance incorporates the following changes to the recommended budget that was presented by staff. The addition of a pool at Lake Rim Park for West Fayetteville to be financed. Uh, the addition of pool dome covers for Bates and Westover pools for off-season operations. Continuation funding for Pathways for Prosperity. Signage and landscaping improvements at cemetery entrances. Increases in fees for burial plots and other cemetery fees. Increased funding for debt service for the stadium and parking deck based upon final amortization tables for the limited obligation bonds. In addition, the general fund undesignated fund balance is projected to be 12.2% of expenditures or $20 million. Um, the changes to the recommended budget are as follows. Um, for stormwater operations, council directed an increase in the stormwater fee of $1.75 to $6 per ERU of equivalent residential unit per month, which will bring the annual, um, stormwater fee for residential units to $72 per year, um, as compared to the 25% increase that was in the original recommended budget. The annual increase equates to $21, and the purpose is to provide an acceleration of watershed studies and then following that, um, associated projects. Um, we hope that five watershed studies will commence in fiscal year 2019. And the previously planned projects that we shared with you relates to stormwater will continue. There were additional changes to the recommended budget as it relates to our transit fund. The proposed fair increases will not be implemented at the direction of council. The Route 11 adjustments will take place beginning in August. Um, and the budget adjustments will incorporate the changes for the fares and Route 11 as well, and, and also for savings from budget projections for bus insurance. For solid waste operations, staff recommended the addition of contract services, um, to assist with timing review of outsourcing alternatives and to mitigate any concerns of objectivity in the review. To do that, we are proposing to pull, set aside $50,000. Um, but we hope we don't have to spend all of it, but we wanted to have that available for contract services should it be necessary as we begin our outsourcing review. And it will be funded by an additional transfer from the general fund. And that, as well as the other changes I mentioned, are incorporated in the balanced, um, budget that is, we'll be, um, looking at in just a moment. To roll all that up, um, the city council action memo provides a summary of the specific revenue and expenditure changes for each of the funds to implement the service, capital, and fee changes noted. Specifically, um, the general fund, um, in the revised proposed 2019 budget will total $238 million across all funds. The general fund will be slightly above $169 million. And then the environmental services fund, as you'll see. And then it goes on down, all the way down to the Lake Valley MSD. We had covered these at the earlier meetings, but I will leave this on the screen for a moment, um, in case there are any questions as we move forward.
Thank you.
And then, okay. And then for the, um, recommended action, um, uh, the council is asked to adopt the following items. The fiscal year 2018 through 2019 budget ordinance. The fiscal year 2018 through, through 2019 fee schedule. Fiscal year 2018 through 2019 strategic plan. And fiscal years 2019 to 2023 capital and technology improvement plans. Capital project ordinances 2019 dash one through 2019 dash 14. Capital project ordinance amendments 2019 dash one through 2019 dash 11. And then 2018 dash sixty-five as well. And with that, uh, Mayor, um, I would take any questions you have or await council's action.
Do have a light on, uh, Mayor Protem Moan?
If the council allows, I'd like to, uh, make a motion so we could have discussion. So, the motion is to approve, adopt fiscal year 2018-19 budget ordinance, fee schedule, strategic plan. Fiscal years 2019 to 2023 capital and technology improvement plan. Capital project ordinances 2019 dash one through 2019 dash 14. Capital project ordinance amendments 2019 dash one through 2019 dash 11. And the 2018 dash sixty-five capital project ordinance amendment.
This is a motion by Mayor Protem Moan and a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you. Oh, uh, Mr. Dawkins, is that a question or are you voting?
Uh, no, I, I had a question. I mean, 'cause it, it appears that the motion is to go ahead and adopt the budget ordinance and there, there won't be any further need for the city manager to continue. Is that right? This would adopt the budget or no?
This would.
Okay. All right, so I do have questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I, we chatted, um, earlier tonight about the, um, change on one of the fire stations. You're eliminating maybe the planning, which is about 370 some thousand dollars. And you said it wasn't in the budget. Um, so then, if it wasn't in the budget, then why is it being eliminated?
Uh, no. Um, we had, um, the council for some time has discussed the idea of having a public safety, um, bond, um, issuance. Um, given that the, um, council did not appear ready to, um, issue that, um, we are proposing instead of moving forward with the design of Station 16, that we would instead fall back and there, there's money in the budget this year for us to do a evaluation of our public safety needs for both fire and for police. On the police side, if you may recall, um, the, um, public safety bond referendum, among other things, would, um, provide for a police training center. And on the, uh, fire station side, it would provide for the construction of fire stations, as well as the relocation of some as well. Given that the council has expressed, um, given some direction that that public safety bond referendum will be on, um, the following year, not this general election coming up this November, but the next one. Um, it did not make sense for us to move forward with the design of Station 16 at this time until we do the, um, public safety evaluation of those facilities. Because the money, um, to construct the station, um, is not part of the budget. So, we would just basically have been extending, moving through design. But given the fact that we're putting off the public safety bond referendum, um, this year, it made more sense to do an evaluation of all of our facilities so that we have really good numbers that we can share with the council and then the council with the community if you move forward with a public safety bond referendum.
Well, I, I, I still, um, I'm, I'm disappointed because now we're gonna move some money to a fourth pool, yet we're in effect not going to go forward with at least a design on this next fire station. So, that's just a, a problem I have. I'm not gonna support, uh, doing that. I'm not gonna support... I am gonna support fire stations and police. We've gotta do the training center at some point. But if a bond issue doesn't pass, we have to build capacity in our capital improvement plan. And it doesn't seem to be the will of the, of the council to do that. And, uh, that doesn't appear to be a recommendation from the staff. So, um, life is all about choices. That's what my daddy told me many times. My pastor told me that yesterday, John Cook. And I just, I can't agree with the choices that this budget is moving forward. It does have some very good things in it. I'm glad we're gonna give our folks a raise. I think that's positive. Um, I'm glad that we're going to move some fees to the solid waste. That's, that's positive. Maybe that it can eventually pay for itself because we have to pick that trash up. No matter what it is, we just gotta pick it up. All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. City Manager, explain the, um, the renovation funding for our, uh, fire stations. I understand about the... for our fire stations. I understand about the new fire stations, but is that, that allocation there? Explain that again.
No, sir. When the council, we had proposed to move forward with the public safety bond this fall, but there was not a lot of consensus about that, and so we had to fall back. And to fall back, we wanted to make sure we have the best numbers for you, which is why we have money in the budget for us to do a review of our public safety, and, which includes police and fire needs. The $374,000, which would have been for design, as you may recall, at one time, we thought we had a piece of land on Bragg Boulevard that would have been an ideal location, and we had asked to move that up. But that, the land proved not to be suitable for our purposes, and, but I can assure you that we won't have fire stations or any other city facilities that are dangerous to use. But as you know from, from our conversations and your visiting of some of the fire stations, there are real needs in our fire service for us to upgrade some of our facilities. And we think that the money that is in the budget, if adopted by council, allow us to do a very good inventory of that so that when we come back to you and then subsequently to the public, asking them to support the public safety bond referendum, we'll have really good numbers. We will have a good idea of what we need.
One thing, now you said something there about having money in the budget to review and then re-review, build that inventory, and then bring it back to council. And I think that that's already been given to us as a whole from our chief.
No, sir.
He did not, okay, well then let me speak specifically here, so everyone will know exactly what I'm speaking of. I just wanted to make sure, I know that we have a lot of our existing fire stations that are in dire straits of repair, but I really hope that we don't wait to a, a new budget cycle to do something for some of them. If you go over, for example, and just happen to look at Santa Fe, you've got ceilings falling in, you've got concrete that going in and out of the bay that are just in terrible, terrible shape. And I don't know if I shared those emails or pictures with council, but I most definitely shared them with our senior staff, and just wanted to bring that up. I understand we need to do the inventory, but to carry things that are in the worst of condition to a, a new budget cycle for 2019, I wish we could do something. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Manager, if there were emergency repairs, sheet rock falling down, that's nothing that would need a significant amount of funding that would wait to another budget cycle, is it?
No, sir. I, I, I hope I was clear that we're going to make sure that the stations are safe. There are some deferred maintenance issues, everything from the concrete inside of some of the bays, ceiling tiles, sheet rock. As you recall, when we were out on, just was it last week that we dedicated the station on Hope Mills Road? That was a night, if you go through that station, there are things in there, such as access to the second floor. There's also access to issues on Santa Fe that Mr. Hare was also referencing. That is also one of the reasons that the staff will support and has recommended to council that you move forward with, ideally the public safety bond. Given the, the large number of capital needs that you have in many of the fire stations, and Fire Chief Major has shared us looking at the age of the stations, the location of the stations, the betterment of response times that we could have. But the money specifically that is in next year's budget is so that if I'd say that the station is going to cost $4 million, you have, should have faith that it is going to cost $4 million if we build it within a reasonable amount of time. The chief has, Police Chief has shared with, with council members and the public the need for a better police training facility. How large should that be? Should it, should it also accommodate the fire station? Should it be a regional center? All of those types of things so that we know when we go to the public for, and request their support for a public safety bond referendum, that we're not in a situation where we have $35 million, but we have $45 million worth of projects. So that's why we want to spend this time over the next year, getting that really, really tight for the council and the community.
All right, councilmember Hare?
Yeah, and I don't, really don't want to prolong this, but I don't want us to move forward on adopting a, a budget and when I call and ask for some repairs of where we are, then I get pushed back. I want to understand that, of what you were saying, that this particular budget will be able to take care of those emergency-type needs in our fire stations or police department, whatever the case may be.
Yes, sir.
So I can rest assured of that.
You can rest assured, as can the council. And that's also one of the reasons that we and the council wisely set aside 12.2% of your fund balance so that if emergency needs come up, we have enough cash on hand to make those repairs. Some of the repairs we make use of existing staff, and depending on the size and complexity, we would contract that out.
All right, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess there was no other green lights going because I pressed my red. You went quickly to councilmember Hare, so thank you for my second, for my one minute. I want to make sure I, I clarify for the public about, there was some information in a periodical about this fourth pool being part of the parks bond issue. This fourth pool is not part of the parks bond issue. That, that was incorrect. There's an incorrect implication. This is a brand-new pool that's separate from the $35 million bond issue. This pool will probably be three and a half to four million dollars. So I'm, I'm disappointed. I wanted you to know I'm disappointed because I want to build capacity for that police training center and for that, those additional fire stations we need. Because there's no guarantee bond issues will pass. This last one did for the parks. And I hope the, the folks will consider supporting a, a bond issue for fire stations and a police training facility. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right. Council, no other questions? Look to you for action. Oh, wait, are those votes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Wait a minute.
You asked for a man.
All right, they gave quick action. All right. Madam Clerk, that is, one, two, three, seven to two. Those voting in favor, councilmember Crisp, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, and Warel. Those voting in opposition, ARP and Dawkins. All right, motion carries. Yes, sir. Yeah, safe, sir. Item 6.0 is the consent. Council, I'll look to you for action on consent items.
Motion to the, uh, consent.
Madam Attorney?
Mayor, I was just clarifying whether councilmember ARP needs a motion to be excused or whether he's calling in.
Yeah, he, he was going to call in. Are you good? All right. All right, item 6.0 is the consent.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as it appears in our agenda packet.
There's a motion by Mayor Protem, there's a second by councilmember Hare. All those, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous with the exception of councilmember ARP, who's in transition to his vehicle. Motion carries. Item 7.0, reports from boards and commissions, 7.01 Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission. Hello?
Hello, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Mr. Carlos Swinger is here on behalf of the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission to present their annual report. This report is for informational purposes to update council on this past year's activities. Mr. Swinger has a brief presentation and will be available to answer questions should you have any following his presentation. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Swinger.
Thank you, Cynthia. Mr. Mayor, Kansas City Council. My name is Carlos Swinger. I am a, a member of the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, where there are seven citizens appointed to this commission. No problem. Tonight I'll be presenting you a, a report of our, our annual report of, of the actions that we've taken throughout the year. I am from District 6. So the responsibilities of the redevelopment commissions are pretty simple. They are to plan, implement, recommend, and advise actions to the, to the city council on HUD and economical, economic community development programs. Our mission is as follows, and it's pretty simple as you peruse through that. You'll see that one of the main things we do is we, we provide citizens the opportunity for decent, safe, and affordable housing through economic development situations. And we, we try to provide job opportunities for those that are in low to moderate incomes. Our main two pots that we work from are from the HUD program, there being the Community Development Block Grant, better known as the CDBGs, and our Home Investment Partnership Grants. And so what I want to show you coming up is our goals throughout the year. We've, have three main goals, and we try to follow the council's direction to provide things to the citizens and the things that you guys are asking us to provide. There as follows. Therefore, decent, affordable housing, in which we try to provide a stable community for our citizens in those neighborhoods that are out there. We provide suitable living environments to where we try to eliminate slum and blighted areas throughout the city, and to support our homeless. And last, economic opportunities where we design, support opportunities for entrepreneurship, and we empower the retentions of jobs throughout the city.
Oh, that's Jim. Sorry, sir.
No problem.
All right, Mr. Carlos, please proceed.
Thank you. So I want to show you some of the accomplishments that we've, well, obtained throughout the year. This year, we have touched over 22,000 citizens in these various programs. Starting with the decent, affordable housing, we've touched over 309 citizens this year, through this past year, in the, in the three areas that you see there. 149 owner-occupant homes received the different, different things throughout the year. As you can see, they, we had citizens who were able to get full rent rehabilitation. We had emergency repairs that we were able to help our citizens with. And as you know, with the hurricane that we had, we were able to, to help 42 citizens as well for the repairs from the disasters that they, they suffered. And 148 new home buyers were able to get counseling so that they can get new homes within the area. And we impacted 12 blighted housing areas throughout the year. Some photos I want to show you before and after. You can see where we have had a citizen who had an issue with their HUD fan and some of the counters, counter space, couldn't afford to take care of that. So they were able to apply, able to apply for a grant to get those things taken care of. We saw that as being something important so that the citizen's home wouldn't catch fire through some of the other things. And with the hot weather we have and, and cold weather we had, we were able to help citizens with the AC and heat unit as well. On the suitable living environments, we were able to touch 14,000 citizens, over 14,000 citizens. You can see the homeless assistance program. We were able to touch 330 homeless personnel, citizens that we were able to assist them with bus tokens, toiletries, and other supplies. And through our partnership with Operation Inasmuch, they were able to serve over 4,000 personnel breakfast on a daily basis. And in partnership with another entity in this, in this city, TruVine Ministries were able to run the Hope, the Hope Center Shelter for the women's, in which they sheltered over 270 women throughout the year. These are all citizens who are helping us make this city a great city. You can see as well, we were able to help out five citizens with the Home and Sewer Assistance Program, and the partnering, partnering with Salvation Army, we were able to service over 9,000 citizens as well with the Salvation Army. And as you can see, the 10 household assisted depart, deposits for utility programs was another event that we were able to help our citizens with. And lastly, the economic opportunities that we provided, we were able to work with. We were able to service 40 small businesses throughout the year and get those folks receiving, helping them receive loans and things of that nature. All total, under the economic opportunity, we were able to service over 6,000 citizens this year, citizens and businesses alike. As you can see, they're broken down there. And lastly, with our partnering with SEED, they were able to service over 1,000 citizens as well and help those people with small businesses assistance as well. We, we did a great job with our neighborhood resource centers in which many of these citizens are in your districts, in which we touched over 5,000 citizens there as well through the different classes and workshops that they're able to do to make this city a great city. You'll see another before and after picture of where we helped out some businesses. All those businesses would have closed if, had we not stepped in and helped them out with the few repairs and things that they need. And we realized that would have impacted jobs and, and the economic growth of this city as well. So these are the things that we did this year, sum totaling over 22,000 citizens that we touched through the redevelopment commission. Questions?
Do have a couple of questions. Mr. Councilman Hare, Jensen, and Wright, and then I have, I had a follow-up comment.
Mr. Swinger, Mr. Carlos, as I look over, as I was going through this, these efforts, and I, and I applaud the redevelopment commission for all of their support and help to our citizens throughout the city. Some of those before and, before and after pictures were, were rather large items, especially with the AC units. And I don't know how many BTUs that, that I saw, but I know it was a very large consuming unit. And then, and then, and then the, the businesses there within the Merchant Road corridor that you worked with, and I do appreciate that. Was there no cost to the resident or the owners at all? No cost to them?
There were costs to them as well. These were grants that they could help, that could help them with their repairs. And so we were not given a free hand to the citizens, but we were giving them a helping hand.
And what was the interest rate on the, on the loans?
I would have to reach back to the staff and get those, that information for you.
Yeah, I know it's very low. I know in some cases it's been about 1%, but I just ask. I know it's very low. But I would like you to shoot me an email on that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I, I have a few questions. And first off, great report, doing some great things in Fayetteville. And I'm, I'm very interested, and I'm, I'm great, it's great that you're helping the citizens out. But the one that really got me was the businesses and kind of helping them out. So I guess my question is, one of the last things you said was, we're going all over the city and all the districts and things. I would be interested because I know that there's different parts of the city that need more help than other ones. As I can say, in, in my district is, everything is, we, we only have a short range because everything is developing. Everything just seems to be coming new, new, because everything is new because we're just developing everything. So it's UD, it's UD, you know, it's a great time to be in District 1 right now. It really is. But everything was put to code. But I know that there, there are even some older buildings in District 1 that it's hard, and it's hard to get the money from the bank, so I applaud what you're doing. But these businesses that have older properties and they're in a place that's getting kind of blighted, I would be really interested to see, you know, which districts we are helping out. And if we're not hitting where we need to be hitting, maybe we need to walk, and they just don't know because we can change, we can change communities if people just know that the access is there instead of maybe giving up.
I, I agree. I agree. And, and one of the biggest ways that we hit those, those communities or your districts is when we do our neighborhood meetings.
Right.
I think what will help, if we were to give you a heads up of the meetings that we're doing in your neighborhoods, and that will allow you to be able to come out and see some of the things that the citizens in those neighborhoods need.
I, I just don't want to get to a point that sometimes you, you live in a community and you think that's the way it is, but when there's help out there and you don't know that help is out there, one building can change the way everybody looks at everything else, and it'll get everybody else starting to want to take care of their thing.
Agreed.
So if you could, if I could get that information- So if you could, if I could get that information, I'd be appreciative.
We'll do that.
Uh, Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I appreciate the work that you are doing in, in development. And a lot of the things that you mentioned in your report is a reflection of what the Pathways for Prosperity is doing in research and as well. That project has gained support from the county, school, and from the city as well. Have you talked to anyone about the Pathways for Prosperity, how the citizens? Because we have a hundred and twenty-five volunteers in those five pathways. And you've mentioned every pathway that we're dealing with in your report today that can assist. And I really like the fact that you are all helping small businesses as well. And the people that you have housed and, and helping, do you have any numbers of people that you kind of help that became productive in society again, as well as all you're doing is helping, 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 and you're not getting anything back as far as the results, that those citizens, what, what benefits that they got, of course, that helped them to get back on their feet or became productive and gave back to society? And so that's important to me to know. And so Pathways for Prosperity is one of the projects that, that the council have adopted. And we funded as well to do some things. And so you're doing a lot of work out there, and I'm just wondering how we can partner with you with the Pathways to make everything go better, because it's about collaboration.
Agreed. And so what we'll do is we'll go back, we meet once a month at noon, and we're all citizens that we take our lunchtime and we come down here at City Hall and we, we meet. And so what we'll do is we'll take that back and we'll look at a better way to be able to partner with you on the Pathways for Prosperity. And of course, we give you a, a report throughout the year, even before the annual budget comes forth. And so we'll look at a better way to be able to do that for you as well. Some of the people that we partner with, like for example, SEED, they have tremendous numbers that they can show us of people that they're helping. And one of the things we do before we, we work and we partner with these people, they have to have a, a good track record. They have to show us that they're actually making, making a good, you know, good, good progress on those citizens that they're reaching out to. So we'll get that back to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, this is, this is encouraging. I mean, last year, year before last, I remember talking to community development about getting money on the street. You know, we had a lot of unused programs that were not being used. And so I see increase, but is there a comparison between, to the chicken measure, the amount of loans that, that hit the street last year versus this year? And so that there are some measurables to this because, you know, I want to see a lot more money on the street. When we get these block grants, you guys are doing a great job and we have to do our part with making it available. I tell people every day I run into, call community development, call purchasing, call Kim Toons. But the council has an obligation to promote these products, these projects and these programs so that the people will know that it's available. So maybe the next time, I don't want to prolong this tonight, but I would like to see some year-on-year comparison so we can see growth with the number of loans being made, the amount of dollars making it to the street. That would, that would be some information I'd like to see. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right. So, council, these are just reports, so no action needed. Item seven point zero two is the Firefighters Relief Fund, is that chief? All right. Oh, his designate. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak tonight on behalf of the Firefighters Relief Fund. I'm Justin Nobles, Captain with the Special Operations Division, the Hazmat piece for the, for the City of Fayetteville Fire Department, and also the Vice Chair for the Relief Fund. Retired Fire Chief Nichols is our Chair and is currently out of town. So again, his designate takes over. Give you a quick background of the Relief Fund for some that may not be aware of it or what it's for. The Relief Fund was enacted into law by legislation in nineteen oh seven. Its initial purpose was to financially assist firefighters who may have been injured when rendering service to our community. It is funded by the percentage of tax on property insurance premiums. In nineteen eighty-four, the General Assembly amended a statute to allow additional expenditures to local funds. This fund can be provided, provide additional educational benefits to the firefighters and their dependents that otherwise qualify for benefits from the Firefighters Relief Fund, as well as provide assistance to destitute firefighters who have served honorably for less, for at least five years, as long as the hardship was not at fault of the firefighter, such as poor investment, unwillingness to work, et cetera. Such basic provisions included but are not limited to assistance with housing, vehicle, or communicating expenses, food, clothing, utility, medical care, and funeral expenses. The City of Fayetteville Fire Department, as well as other fire departments within North Carolina, must meet the annual requirements in order to become eligible to receive these funds, which are, in short, the fire department must be rated and a member of the North Carolina State Firemen's Association. The department must submit a financial report of the local Firefighters Relief Fund distribution and the remaining balance of the State Firefighters Association. All this must take place each year by October thirty-first. The Firefighters Relief Fund Board of Trustees is comprised of five people, two elected by the fire department, two elected by the city governor and body, and one appointed by the Insurance Commission. The board currently sits as, again, the Chair is retired Fire Chief Benny Nichols, and he is appointed by the Insurance Commission, the Vice Chair being myself. Our Treasurer currently is our intern with the City of Fayetteville Financial Office, Mr. Jay Tolan. And there's two other members, Captain Tommy Warren and retired Battalion Chief Calvin Bishop. Chief Majors, of course, acts as our ex-official of the board and assists in all efforts and any question for the board. Deputy Chief Hill and Senator Boast are active and supporting in our meetings. And of course, Ms. Bobby Bethay acts as our secretary and administrative assistant that keeps us in line and keeps everything in order. Kind of short and sweet, any questions?
Don't think I do. We've got a Ms. Bethay also that keeps us straight.
That's our go-to person, for sure.
All right, council, any questions for Fire Chief or about the Firefighters Fund or his appointee? All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
It would be appropriate if council would receive the reports and...
Okay, absolutely will.
Ms. Mayor, make a motion that we receive the reports that were given, both reports as favorable.
All right, as a motion by Councilmember Wright to receive both reports presented in item seven point zero one and seven point zero two, the second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action.
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, including Mr. Arps Green.
John Deere Green.
Turn his mic down. All right. All right, item eight point zero is the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last longer than thirty minutes. And each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the City of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until that public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you would come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have thirty seconds to speak. When you see the light turn red, your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have ten speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Harriet McAllister. Ms. Harriet McAllister. Doesn't appear to be here, okay. Our next speaker signed up is Ms. Cheyenne Lockhart. Ms. Cheyenne Lockhart. Our third speaker signed up is Ms. Tammy McDougald. Ms. Tammy McDougald. Our fourth speaker signed up for this evening is Mr. Donovan McGeechee. Mr. Donovan McGeechee. I know the next speaker is here. That's Ms. Karen Price. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Price.
Hey, Ms. Price.
Hi, Mayor and council members.
Can you speak into the mic for us?
Oh, Mayor, is that better? This way? Oh, better? Okay. Thank you. Mayor and council members, I am here to say thank you, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you do. My name is Karen Price and from three two two seven Cliftdale Road. I bought my house with my husband thirty years ago and we raised our family here. And I would like to thank you, as I said, for everything you do, especially for that resolution to oppose the widening of the eastern section of Cliftdale Road. Your unanimous decision to oppose this unnecessary widening is greatly appreciated by our entire close-knit community. We live in a lovely, safe, historic neighborhood on the famous Dogwood Trail with all the beautiful Dogwood trees, magnolia trees, and azalea bushes that Fayetteville is so well-known for. And I see our flag over there. We are a residential community with a school for our children, our grandchildren. We are, there's no commercial business on our street, none whatsoever. Any widening of our point-nine-mile small section of Cliftdale Road will only create problems. First, it will decrease safety in our community. More accidents will occur as our children try to cross multiple lanes just to get to their school. Coming out of our driveways, we will have to go right and then go into other streets to circle around to go left. Very confusing and very dangerous indeed. Second, it will increase traffic and cause more congestion. Studies confirm that more lanes only bring more cars, that's a fact. There will be constant traffic instead of just the two times that we have a little bit of traffic when school starts and school lets out. And that is true for any school, just look at any of the local schools and you'll see that. I know for a fact that's that way at Terry Sanford where I taught before. And the last thing I'd like to say is any widening of Cliftdale would be a waste of taxpayers' money. A sixteen million dollars is a lot of money. Surely it can be spent better on other worthy projects. Let's be responsible citizens and not waste our hard-earned taxpayers' dollars. Any widening of Cliftdale Road will only bring many negative impacts which will forever change our treasured homes for which we have worked so hard. Thanks to you and your support with all the resolution to oppose the widening of our small section of Cliftdale, we are proud to call Fayetteville home. We are the all-American city with history, heroes, and a hometown feeling. Let us preserve and protect our neighborhood within our all-American city. Thank you again, together we can preserve our neighborhood. I appreciate all you do. And I made it in three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You did good.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Van Price.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Mayor and council members, I too am very, am here to say thank you. My name is Van Price and I bought a beautiful home at three two two seven Cliftdale Road just across from Fayetteville Academy in nineteen eighty-eight. My children attended Alma Eastern Elementary School. And later, we returned and they both graduated from Terry Sanford. Daughter in two thousand and my son in two thousand and three. Our daughter then graduated from NC State while I was stationed here at Fort Bragg in two thousand and four. My wife taught at Terry Sanford and at Methodist College. She taught French at the high school and she taught college English at night at Methodist College. I served in the Eighty-Second Airborne Division in the Eighteenth Airborne Corps during Just Cause in Panama when we took Noriega and put him in jail. And later in Desert Shield, Desert Storm, in the liberation of Kuwait while stationed at Fort Bragg. And I served twenty-four years in the service, and I really love this area. We certainly appreciate Fayetteville's history, heroes, and hometown feelings. I want to thank you for unanimous support to oppose the widening of Cliftdale Road between McPherson Church and Morganton Road. As you know, there is no reason to widen this section of Cliftdale Road. Our road is not intended to be a cut-through. There are many other roads, Morganton, McPherson Church, that can transport traffic to our commercial areas. We are not a commercial zone. We've lived there for thirty years, many neighbors have lived there even longer. Ann Ral is our neighbor and she's been there and has taught many people here in, not only in this room, but throughout the state. We'll not have time, and the time that it takes to travel point-nine miles, there's so little savings in time to make this a cut-through, it's not worth it. The two ninety-five is taking traffic away from Cliftdale. And once they fix the Mirror Lake Bridge, most of the people that are in Van Story and the other neighborhoods will then go back to Morganton Road, then they'd have no use for Cliftdale Road. Huge roads through the middle of neighborhoods ruins the hometown feelings. It disrupts established neighborhoods and is not fitting for this all-American city. We're in a residential area in a school zone, not commercial. We're on Dogwood Trail, the safety of our children are paramount. Our historical, quiet, safe neighborhood needs to stay. We don't need to have eyesores, more litter, and we don't need utility lines and telephone poles right next to our homes. We need to spend, we do not need to spend money to reduce home values and reduce taxes. We should be spending money to make money, not wasting sixteen million dollars and then losing money on our devalued homes. Again, I want to thank you and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinal.
That's a surprise. Mr. Reinal, how are you, sir?
Know he was here. Yes, sir, yes, sir, he's been handing them out for years. That's right, Jake.
I've never seen him in a white shirt.
I've got an overhead if I could, if I could get the overhead projector.
Because the audience isn't going to see the, see the information that I just sent out. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the Fayetteville City Council, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinal, five sixteen Deerpath Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. A forty-plus percent increase in the Fayetteville Cross Creek Cemetery burial fees added after the public hearing was a surprise and shock. You need the dead to contribute a few thousand more to the city's already inflated budget. I provided the list of the names, ages, and if the deceased was a veteran or first responder of the Cross Creek Cemetery burials since January first of last year. There are probably more than those reported in the newspaper. Of the fifty-four burials, the youngest was an infant child, while the oldest was one hundred and five years of age. The average age was seventy-five. Ten were military veterans or former first responders. Most were citizens on fixed incomes. Several of the obituaries reported former Fayetteville residents who died elsewhere and came home to make Fayetteville their eternal resting place. Higher cost compounding the death of a loved one, the grief, and the tremendous funeral costs and family members by increasing these fees on a small piece of city-owned property. This chart that I'm showing you here shows the difference between the, the old fees and the ones that you just approved tonight. On a later meeting, you can actually correct this and approve a CPOA to remove the fee increase if you feel it's necessary. I would certainly urge my fellow residents and citizens to contact their members of the city council and encourage them to reduce the, the fee increase on the Cross Creek Cemetery. Urge you to give our deceased family members, friends, and neighbors a break, and please take action to stop the fee increases. Let us deceased residents rest in peace, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Joanna Quick.
Welcome, Ms. Quick.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Joanna Quick. I reside at six forty J. Voluntar Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two eight three zero one. Um, first of all, I want to thank the council for expeditiously, um, filling the vacancy of the District Two seat. Um, I thank all of the residents who offered themselves for service. I would like to welcome Councilman-elect Dan Colvin to District Two. Uh, my vision for Fayetteville and Cumberland County hasn't changed. Um, my vision is for us to become one community. We need leaders who have vision to bring us together. Um, I believe this council has the abilities to put differences aside, to help not only the residents, um, but the governments to work together and collaborate. Um, I submit to you that the needs of District Two, um, and each other council district is not just for the person sitting in that seat, but for each council member. So I encourage you to keep the citizens first, to continue to listen to the public, and please be accessible to residents. Um, thank you for all you do, and I'll just leave you one thought to ponder. Um, what does the Lord require of thee but to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with thy God? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Coffey.
Good evening, Mr. Congressman. Mayor Colvin and, and council members. Thank you for all you do. As everyone has said, you guys are doing a great job, but even with, um, any family, there's always going to be some dissension. And I am opposed to several things that went on, um, earlier this month, and I just want to put it on the record. Uh, I am opposing the four-year terms, whether they're staggered or unstaggered, for city council and mayor. I am opposed to the council, um, primaries, and I'm also opposed to the election filing fees that were increased. This is not the first time the idea of four terms for, I'm sorry, I didn't give my name. Sheila Coffey, six-six-one-nine Brandon Way, two-eight-three-one-four, District Eight. Uh, this is not the first time the idea of four terms for council has been raised. When Councilman Hare was on, uh, council during two thousand and five, the issue was raised at that time for the, the four years. Uh, there was a task force, if, uh, Councilman Hare remembers, of citizens that made, it was thirteen on that, that task force, who said, um, who came up and, and voted unanimously against four, four-year terms. Um, I today agree with that. Um, and at that time, Councilmember Curtis Worthy also stated that he heard loud and clear from the constituents that, um, two-year terms was adequate, and therefore, no change would be in order. And that was in two thousand and five. That is in your minutes from January twenty-fourth, two thousand and five. And I've, uh, submitted that to you with those, um, high, issues highlighted as well. As far as the council primaries, the cancellation of the primary election is a travesty of democracy to our citizens. To place individuals in office with far less than fifty percent of a majority vote is undemocratic. The one-hundred-thousand-dollar price tag for primary elections quoted by Mr. Chris, City Council, June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, is worth the money to secure a proper and fair democratic process. Everything is not subject to be relegated to a line item of the budget, and certainly not about selecting the representatives of our citizenry. Thank you, Councilmen, gents, women, gentlemen, gentsen, for understanding, for standing in opposition to this motion. Um, during the two thousand and four meeting, Mr. Chris also introduced a motion to increase the filing fee to run for council from twenty-four dollars, and mayor forty-eight dollars to one percent of the, uh, position salary. The increase, according to the Fayetteville Observer, would be approximately one-seventy and three-twelve. I'm against that. How can we determine who is serious about running, and how can we place obstacles in someone's path with the right to be able to vote? I mean, excuse me, to be able to run? So with that, I know my time is up. I've already submitted this to you in writing, along with the attachment of the, um, minutes from two thousand and five. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. And I think that it should, it should be noted that council's action was to, if this move forwards, to put it on the ballot for the citizens to make the decision. I don't think, uh, there was ever a discussion where the council was going to make these changes. It would be to allow the citizens to vote on it if they chose to approve it or not. It would be, would include or di, or, or not include any of these proposals. So just want to clarify that for the listening audience, that, that, that was, uh, the actions that were taken. But thank you, Ms. Coffey, for that. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have one final speaker, Mr. Willie Williams.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Willie Williams.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I'm gonna tell you what, there's one thing about God. Don't make any mistakes. I've been praying all the week that the council, I know we have a good council, and the noise machine in the street was bothering me, bothering me real bad. And I prayed when I got here that the right, uh, decision would be made, and it was. I feel something about this gentleman. I don't know him, but I feel something about him, and it's good. It's good. So I want to thank you. I want to thank you. You did outstanding job making that selection. Okay, my name is Willie Williams, one-one-six-five San Hill. My, I'm with the Community Awareness Alliance. And what we do, we, uh, find issues that affect poor and needed people all around the Fayetteville area. We call in the community, we decide, talk about it, we decide about it, we see what we can do about it, and we motivate the group, and we get something done. But now, here's what's bothering me now. The Panhandling Law. This Panhandling Rule, I know it's good. There's one on the book already, and now, from what I gather, you voted on another one. Now, when, uh, to, to go along with this and add some more teeth to it. Now, the teeth to it, from what I gather, if I'm wrong, let me know. The teeth to it was that not, this me speaking, Christian people like me who are givers will be fined a hundred dollars if I give a person that the Lord said, "Give him a hundred dollars" on the street. If I give him a hundred dollars, and the policeman walk up, run up behind me, I would be fined a hundred dollars. If I'm wrong, let me know. All right. Now, there's something wrong with that picture. Fifty bucks? Okay, well.
But i, if it is in a major intersection. It's not to stop you from doing the action. It's to stop you from doing it in the intersection.
Okay. From what, see, the people have been, uh, contacting us. See, most people don't know about this.
Right.
It's not out there, and, uh, most people don't have internet and, uh, computers where they can check these things out. So on this coming Saturday, we are having, uh, a co, um, community forum where, uh, we have, a bunch of people have signed up to come, so we can explain this thing to them.
Where's that forum at, sir?
We will be having it on, uh, MacArthur Road at the library, uh, North Regional Library, eight-five-five MacArthur Road here in Fayetteville. That's up on the side. And we will be explaining this to the people, because, see, they don't, they are up in arms, I mean, up in arms in their mind, because all they hear is one hundred dollars fine. Uh, it started at two o'clock. There will be serving refreshments. All right? That, you'll get them there anytime.
It's got more crowded, Mr. Willie.
But anyway, uh, I'm glad you enlightened me on the amount of money, but if the people don't know, the lack of knowledge is, is, is messing up. And so, uh, this is why I'm here. So even with the fifty dollars, I mean, if we could kind of vacate that period and just put the word out, because there's an ordinance out there which tell the policeman that, that Panhandling is illegal. Why is the money added?
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Willie. Uh, so, Council, it, it was just, if, if your comment is to just clarify misinformation, we'll try to do that. Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and another thing, Mr. Williams.
Okay, all right, Ms. Clerk.
Is just, um, as long as that person is not impeding traffic, okay? Y, yes, you can still give. If he, if you want to pull over to the side of the road in, in a parking lot, for example, you can give as much as you want to. Okay? So it, it's, we never, it was never about stopping from giving. It was, the, the, the case was about being, uh, providing proper safety, not only for that person that is requesting, uh, a handout, but also the driver. Okay? All right.
Uh, Councilmember Chris, was, did you have a?
Mr. Williams, Willie Williams, that's my son-in-law's name. He's a little skinny dude, though. But I wanted to tell you this. Week before last, a man approached me in the parking lot, that eatery out there on Rafer Road. Used to be, what's the name of that thing? I don't know. Uh, Fuller's is what it is. And he and his wife, and I gave him twenty dollars in the parking lot. I can't give him twenty dollars on the street, okay? Because that becomes a hazard to the traffic. We're not trying to stop anybody. We can't tell you who to give your money to. Don't intend to tell you that. And like you, I'm in my church every Sunday morning, and I'm a giver too, because he gives it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chris. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Madam Clerk?
May we have no further speakers?
No further speakers. All right. So at this time, we'll close the public forum. Item nine-point-zero-one, public hearing. Uh, consideration for incentives for Project Intelligence. Mr. Robo.
All right, sir. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, Council, staff. Thank you for scheduling this required public hearing in order to consider an economic development incentive package for Project Intelligence. This is an existing company here in Fayetteville that specializes in management consulting and engineering services. The expanded operations would initially occupy currently vacant space within an existing building with plans for future growth. If we are successful in securing the project, they would retain forty existing jobs through December, uh, minimum of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Can't believe I'm old enough now that twenty-twenty-two is, uh, around the corner. Create a hundred-seventy-eight jobs by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, and two-hundred-eight new jobs projected by twenty-twenty-three. The company offers a competitive salary of sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars per year on average. Uh, one thing that we have discussed, uh, in previous conversations is the lowest-paid position here is scheduled to be at fifty thousand. So this is, um, high employment across a, a very, um, strong average wage. They would also make significant investment in real estate, equipment, approximately one-point-two million out of the gate, projected future growth to exceed five million. The project is competitive in nature with operations in multiple states. Uh, with your support, we hope to reinforce and dramatically improve, uh, their employment and operations here in Fayetteville. Uh, secondarily, and I think not to be missed, the company has expressed a strong interest in working with the community to attract local citizens and diversify their applicant pool, while also working with Fort Bragg, uh, to retain soldiers transitioning into the private sector. Notice of public hearing was published on June first in the Fayetteville Observer, meeting statutory requirements, and so in some way respectfully request that you hold the public hearing for Project Intelligence, and after that public hearing, if it's your will, uh, to consider approval of a local incentive grant not to exceed eighty-nine thousand dollars. And Cumberland County approved a similar grant last week, and we are working with the state of North Carolina to, uh, as they consider their potential support for the project. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Right. Any questions? All right, if not, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Public hearing. Individuals desire, desiring to speak at public hearings must have signed up to speak with city clerk by name, address, before seven P.M. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes unless by a previous arrangement single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson, uh, many use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. Uh, Mr. Robo, he already has given his presentation. So at this time, Madam Clerk, we'll open the public hearing.
May we have no speakers for this item?
No speakers, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And Council, I look to you for action. Uh, Councilmember Dawkins, I saw your light. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the, uh, consideration of incentives for Project Intelligence. If that's the correct, Madam Attorney, uh, proper way to make that motion. Okay? Thank you. Is a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, a second by Councilmember Wattell? Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I look to you for votes. Mr. Arp still on the line? Mr. Arp, were you catching any of this?
Mr. Arp? Yes, ma'am. You ready for the vote on the, uh, incentives? Yeah, Councilmember Dawkins motion, uh, seconded by Miss Wattell. Three.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, is she unanimous, including Councilmember Arp by phone? Thank you, sir. Go get them. All right. Council, we'll move to, uh, item ten, ten-point-zero-two, Center for Economic Empowerment Development, Kitchen Incubator Update.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, members of city council, Suzie Robowski, the executive director of SEED, is here to update council on the kitchen incubator project. As you'll recall, she made a presentation in March and identified some funding delays, and she's here to update council and provide information, as well as request an extension on the current contract, which expires July thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, of course, um, throughout the year, we have done several improvements and have, um, gone along with our plan for the projects. Um, we had this project last year. We put it under contract. We had to redo drawings. Uh, we had to go back to the drawing board, redo drawings based on a new entry for the driveway. Um, we did that. We finished that, um, which pushed the project further into the January, February timeframe. Um, and, and all this time, we got the approvals, um, from DOT. Um, we are just waiting our last bit of certification from them. Um, we completed all of our engineering drawings, all of our, um, construction drawings. Uh, we put out the, um, construction drawings for bid. We got those bids back. We had seven, seven different construction companies come back and bid, um, on the project. We awarded it to M&amp;E Construction, um, but the bid came back at one-point-one instead of the six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Um, so that gave us a gap in funding. Um, so went back to, our committee went back to our board, discussed it with our board. Our board felt confident that, um, we, we are good with moving forward, um, as long as we have the contract in place with the city and the extension approved, um, to go forward with, uh, funding from a bank. Um, in talking with the bank, um, we are looking at a million dollars in a construction loan, um, that they would extend over a year. Um, and after that, um, we would pay that down, um, during that timeframe with the money that we get from the city of Fayetteville. Um, we own the building that we have outright. Uh, four-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars is what it would appraised for. Um, we need the city contract extended in order for the bank to give us the thumbs up and move forward. Um, with that being said, the thumbs up and move forward is that the bank comes in and gives us rate sheets, and board decides yes or no. Without your funding, the, the rates would be too high for us, and we wouldn't be able to continue the program. We talked a little bit today about not doing this program and, you know, what it would take, or what it would, what, how it would impact you and your numbers. Um, but how it would impact the community is the number of businesses that we see that cannot open their small business because of the lack of funding that they have. Um, SEED opened up a small loan program. Uh, we put out almost three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars this year in small, small business loan funds. Um, we've also helped other people in the community, um, with helping open up just their businesses. Sixty percent of who we see are wanting to open up small, small restaurants or some type of food truck, and this incubator would allow that to happen. These incubators have eighty percent success rates. Eighty percent of them are turning over profit. Um, we know that the size and the amount of people that come to us, this incubator would be successful. So my request to the city council is that you extend the contract that we currently have. that was, um, out to July thirty first and give us a year extension on that contract so that we can complete these items.
Thank you, Ms. Suzie. There are a couple of questions. I have one, uh, in particular. The hundred thousand dollars, and, and Councilmember Waddell has, her light is, is, is lit as well. So the hundred thousand dollars that was given, uh, initially by the city, uh, has all of that been used?
No, there's fifty-six thousand that is still remaining. Um, I applied it as far as the, I put all of the documentation in the report. The re, the remainder of it will come through with the engineering, um, invoices and things like that that come through the, um, architect. The full invoice of the architect was like ninety-nine thousand and five hundred, so, so everything will be applied over. That money has been sitting in a bank account since it was given to us. We haven't used it for anything else. And so the only time it's ever been approved to use is for those contracted services that were completed upon completion.
Okay, and the one point one million dollar, uh, estimate?
Yes.
You said the bank would give you a million dollars?
Right.
Uh, construction loan. Where is the other hundred thousand?
The M and E Construction is actually working on dwindling down for us, and they told us there's about a hundred thousand dollars there that they could get down. Some of the costs in concrete and the uses of concrete, some of the outside nice things that we had, we can find some, um, donations. Um, as well as, um, there's just plumbing pieces and some other pieces in there that, um, the current require, not the requirement, but what the architects put in there or the engineers put in there were things like cast iron. And they said in some places they could use B V C and stuff like that. So there's lots of places where they could save some, some money along the way.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Waddell and then Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I have three very quick questions, and I'll ask them back to back, and then you can just answer. The first question is, how did you acquire the building? The second question is, you said something in terms of creating a gap in funding that you all would be responsible for paying, and I think it was between four and five hundred thousand. I'd like to know how you would pay that back. And then the, the third question is, have you looked at any other community partners to, to move this project forward other than just the city of Fayetteville?
So we were, um, the building was donated to us, uh, from two business, local businessmen here, uh, Michael Green and W A Bisit. Um, and they had this building, and they had, they wanted to gift it to an organization that would, that would make it useful. And, um, because of what we had coming through the business center at SEED, um, I spoke to them about using it as a business incubator, as a kitchen business incubator. Sixty percent of who we see coming through the business center are people wanting to create some type of food business. Um, so they liked the idea, and they provided that to us. Um, and they said, yeah, this is a great idea. Let's go ahead and do this. Um, so they gave us the building because of that. Uh, we gave them this great big presentation and what we could do for the community. Um, the gap in funding, I'm, I'm. Right, so it would be completely in a loan, um, which is what our board decided that they would be willing to take that risk in our income that we would get when we build the incubator. So you don't get to use the incubator for free. You have, um, utilization of the incubator, and that incubator would be used at like twenty-eight dollars an hour as our current cost, um, based on these costs with what we, what we've projected. And even at thirty percent utilization of the incubator, those costs would be covered with the loan. Um, it would be a twenty-four seven facility. So you have so many hours in the day that it could be used, um, in the year. But even at thirty percent capacity, the funds would be taken care of there. And so the board was comfortable with that, with our projections, and so, uh, they voted to move forward. Um, and other community partners, um, we have lots of community partners. Um, what I want to say about that is, is, um, Cumberland Community Foundation granted us fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we have, um, Piedmont Natural Gas gave, um, uh, ten thousand dollars. The Atlanta Coast Pipeline gave another ten thousand dollars. We have, uh, about thirty thousand dollars in, um, individual support that gave to the organization as well. Um, and we know that once it's built, there's other community partners that can use the kitchens to do thi, to do more with their nonprofits. Second Harvest Food Bank could come in and cook meals. Mr. Pringle and I have had conversations about him coming in and being able to cook meals and get better use out of the food that they have so that they can distribute it to the kids in the summertime. Um, but those are the different things that we know. We know that Denise Giles can come in and, and they can start doing some, some different canning and things like that with their products that they get. Um, they get the gleaning products from the sweet potatoes from the farmers and things like that. So there are lots of community partners that can use it with grants, but it just has to be built. So we don't feel like there's a gap later on in, in being able to afford the loan. Um, but that initial, that initial gap, if we don't have that, it will be out of our reach.
So very briefly, have you provided to, to, to us, because I've not seen it, have you provided to us any of the other, a, anything to substantiate or verify the, the usage that you all are anticipating? Have you provided letters of intent?
We have very much in the pa, in the, in the early stages of when we developed this project, we did provide all of those things. Um, and so there probably aren't, they were probably on someone's desk a long time ago, but I can provide all of those things again.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. I, Councilmember Waddell asked, um, most of the questions I was getting ready to ask, so, um, I guess my, my first question was corporate sponsorship, um, and I, you've kind of answered that. Is there any corporate sponsorship out there?
Nothing, nothing beyond what we've done right now. Um, we are looking at other ones, um, and looking at other foundations. I'm, I'm always looking, um, looking at Pepsi, looking at Coca-Cola, looking at some of the other organizations out there.
Okay, so there's one thing that you said that kind of concerned me, and it might, it should, it might not need to concern me, but you said it was going to be a twenty-four use facility, and you probably told us that, and it, it just lost out of my head, and it, I just thought about it. So it's gonna be downtown, and you're gonna have twenty-four hour, um, twenty-four hours, so people are gonna be able to come and go as they please?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, and I don't want this to sound as it's gonna come out, because it's gonna sound really bad.
Any questions?
Being a woman in business.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, are you gonna have one person there as it's open? Is it gonna be a free-for-all? Or are you gonna have at least two people there? I mean, what is the security measure that's going out? And I know I'm in the weeds, but I'm sorry, I just can't, I, I, I can't, I'm in the weeds. I'm sorry, I'm gonna get out of it. That kind of concerns me.
So any client that has to come through has to go through a vetting process. So they have to have, they're gonna have to have some type of insurance. They're gonna have to have training. Um, the, the person that we're hiring to, uh, manage the incubator has a very great background in, um, training people on food service and food industry and how to use equipment and all those things.
I understand that, I guess.
So, security cameras, um, you know, janitorial checks, all of those kinds of things. Um, we, we use best practices from other, uh, incubators in the state of North Carolina.
So is that common practice that they're open twenty-four hours?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, that's, I'm sorry, I made that go out too much. That was basically what I was looking for. So the money that y'all raise at your annual fundraiser, will that go to any of this, or that's just for operating costs?
That typically goes into our housing program. Um, and if there is some leftover that we don't need, we will put it into this program as well. Um, but typically it goes into the low-income housing program that we have. We have over fifty houses that we rent out to low-income, um, people. So those are people that are sixty percent and below median income here in our community.
Do you feel with the support that you have if you do find yourself in a bind? After all this is coming?
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
We won't have enough time to raise it.
Okay, no, but what I'm saying is if you get the money and you find yourself not being able to make the payments, I personally feel that you have a big enough following that people will not let you fail in the community.
Absolutely.
That's the question I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I don't think that we have a lack of people and opportunity for people there, um, to give to. Um, and we do have lots of support. Um, I just think that, that number three hundred and fifty scares a lot of people.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for being at our meeting earlier, uh, tonight and explaining some of this. But I, I think, and I want to thank Sergeant Major, Councilmember Chris, for his positive comments because of the number of jobs this thing is gonna create. So could you tell us what your projections are for jobs and then what your projections are to being able to operate? Because, uh, Council Lady Jensen made some good points. I mean, it's gonna be going hard, but are you gonna be able to make any money? I mean, yes, we might can build this thing, but then can we operate it and, and sustain itself?
Absolutely. Um, so when we look at even fifty percent utilization of the program, you've got about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Operating costs are about thirty thousand dollars a year, so that's our break-even point. Um, that is with at least three staff members, um, at least one full-time and then two part-time. And then, and when you look at, and that's just the job creation for us, and that's just keeping minimal staff members. The key part of our incubator program is, is that we have SEED and the businesses that, the, the business and technology piece that we have over there in assisting those businesses. Um, as far as businesses go, the typical run-through of people is about forty-five clients a month. And those, those are small businesses that are typically two to three employees. Um, at least two might be full-time, but they at least hire three to four part-time.
Well, my concern is, I, I sense the April two thousand nineteen may be too far. I mean, could you live with December thirty-one? I mean, because that, that gives you six months, um, versus nine or ten months. Uh, close to seven months, I guess, whatever it is, but.
Construction lines are tight. Uh, the only, the only thing that I would say is, is I'm at the will of some of the constructions and the weather and things like that that happen. And we can run as tight as line as possible and try to put, you know, uh, things in there. I just have to be able to come back to you and give you an update and have everyone be understanding that if we don't meet a, an opening as of December, then, um, it's, it's just a tight schedule.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so as, uh, we prepare to bring this, this issue home, I think that, uh, the, the manager, or you mentioned that you were supposed to get some commitment by the fifteenth, is the fifteenth of June?
Yes.
And so to me, a, a decision to extend this thing twelve months, and she'll have a significant, because if you get that commitment, that's a significant, uh, step toward the, the confidence and the success of this program, because this has been ongoing. I know I've at least voted for it about two or three budget years, right?
Right.
And so my concern is that we blindly do this extension, but that next step is critical to all of this even being possible. And so if you don't get that by the fifteenth, what is the fallback plan? And two?
I contact you and tell you that I don't have it, and you move on with.
So will, will it impede your ability to get that in four days if, if the council waits until after then, after the fifteenth, to give you, grant your extension, or we grant the extension with the condition that that's received by the end of the week? Is that four days? Is that something?
I would prefer the latter, because the banks are gonna want to see that I have the extension on the contract.
Okay, so that, that could be something to consider, council, for consideration, um, there. So, um, I think, you know, the overall spirit is we want to see it work. I think it's a great program. But are, are most of these, uh, funded in this way? Um, the, these, the other models of incubators, like, to me, I would think right off what popped in, are you, are you collaborating with any universities or schools that teach culinary, or, or is there any use of resources from any of these institutions that have that?
So we are trying to use resources that we, that we can along the way. Um, and part of what we, what we can do and some of what, what other culinary institutions have said they would like to do is, you know, teach some classes and do those kinds of things. But, um, usually in those, and budget numbers are so tight in the universities and the systems there, uh, use of the, and rental the facility later is a, is a big possibility. Um, but we haven't found a real tight, you know, partnership as well as that goes.
Or anything substantial to sink your teeth in?
Not yet.
Committed, okay.
Not yet.
All right, so council, I'll look to you. Well, I have a question from Councilmember Chris.
Mr. Mayor, I need to say this in, in support of SEED. When I first came on this council, it was called a women's center. And one of the first things I zeroed in on was the money and the budget that we were giving to this nonprofit. And I said, why are we giving them money, and we're not giving money to every nonprofit? And the word went out, but Ms. Sylvia Ray invited me over. And Councilwoman Applewhite and I went over and got an education on what SEED does for this city and this community and this county. And I stand by that. The things that they have done and are doing in terms of entrepreneurship, teaching people how to operate businesses, and the list just goes on and on and on. I just don't think we ought to put any kind of restrictions on them and just give them what they're asking for. She needs a year extension. The banks move slowly. We all know that. What's wrong with giving the year extension, just like she asked for? Doesn't necessarily have to pony up the money yet, but we give her what she wants. Give them the extension. They're doing great things in this city, SEED is. There's no question to that. They're building entrepreneurs and businesses.
Is that a motion, Mr. Chris?
That is a motion.
All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Chris to gi, give them anything they want? Is that what you said?
No, I said, give them the year's extension.
Okay, okay.
And the caveat is on the money, not necessarily coming out at this time. But the year's extension is critical for her to show the bank that this city is committed behind this project.
Well, I, I, I think.
That's my motion.
I, 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 there's a motion on the floor. I'll just add this before.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second his motion.
It's a second by Councilmember Arp, so now I'm in the discussion phase. I'll say my piece. I, I support what he said. I just think that if you, you're saying to me that if you don't receive this commitment of funding by the date or within a reasonable amount of time of what you said, then you've got to come back to us and tell us that the project.
At this point, we've, we've, we've left no stone unturned in trying to get this project done. I'm not gonna lie to you. I mean, we've gone to every funding source. We've gone through everything that we have to do. And for lack of better terminology, with the baseball field going up, if we build it, they will come. And i, i, I have no lack of people wanting to use this facility. Um, it's just that I have a lack of funding for the facility to get, to get built. And this will allow us to get there. The bank has, is believing in us so far, um, because we have, like, Mr. Chris Fed, uh, this longevity of an organization, um, and we have assets to back that up as well, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking, I guess the city attorney, uh, it, it, or, or manager. So if, if this is, agreement is extended a year, but they reach a point where they, it's impassable, does the contract automatically void out, or are we still on the hook for you?
If, um, what I heard, um, and please, Suzie, if you will correct me, they will know by Friday whether or not they have secured the funding from the bank. If the funding is not secured by the bank, um, then they would need to regroup.
There, there will be some contingencies. Like, I don't expect the appraisal to be done so far. Um, but I do, will get an answer as to a letter of intent and/or a letter of commitment at that time.
All right, several questions, several lights. Uh, so, uh, Councilmember Wright and then Waddell and Jensen.
I, I just first want to say, uh, that I appreciate the work, uh, that SEED has been doing through the years. I'm, you know, just like, um, Councilman Crisp said, I went to over to get a briefing, um, as well, and I was impressed. But I'm concerned, um, about this particular deal, because you're saying that, uh, you're not sure if the bank is gonna come through, even if we come through in the length of time. So, and it's, I'm not really clear on, you know, where we stand if we grant you this.
I, I don't know the variances for the bank on the difference between a commitment and w, w, what they need complete for a commitment. And I'm afraid of the appraisal not being completed, um, and/or what the intent letter looks like. And so without that information, I, I don't have to give to you right now, other than what that difference is.
Um, you know, just like the mayor, um, asked the city manager, um, and, and maybe we need to go to an attorney as far as the legal ramifications of this approval. And then it's not going through with the bank, then we stand. And then it's not going through with the bank, then we stand to just have 350 grand standing still until you decide to go forward with some other idea? Or what is your plan B?
Yeah, at this point, I don't have anything past that point. I mean, at this point, I've exhausted everything that I can do. That's all I'm asking for. Let me exhaust all of my options here. Give me the opportunity to exhaust this option and the short timeframe. You know, the four days or whatever. Yes, it could be done by then, but I, like I'm saying, I don't know the difference between, for the bank, for the letter of commitment or the letter of intent.
Thank you. Councilmember Waddell, I think it was, Waddell and Jensen?
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to probably oversimplify this, but for the purposes of making sure that I understand and that I articulate accurately. I fancy the show Shark Tank. And I watch those investors and they expect for the people that come before them looking for an investment to be very clear on what all the working parts are. I think that the lack of clarity that you have and present to us on what the working parts are are what give me pause. Also, what gives me pause is when you say, I've turned every stone, I've tried everything that I can try. I would think that something as viable as this incubator is being made to sound would be something that private investors or the university or even those who would like to use the incubator would be willing to pre-invest in. And I would love to see something like that. I would love to see a commitment from the community and those who are saying, we want to use this, even if it's just, you know, as somebody said, like a pre-lease. So those are the things that give me pause. I'm rooting for this to work because I do think that it will be a wonderful asset to the community. But I just need to make sure that we have all of the information available to us before we continue to tie ourselves to this particular project. And that's what I think about the motion that was made. I think if you were asking for, you know, I would, I'll get this letter of intent or commitment, and then you understood what that meant in terms of you moving forward. And you said, if you guys can give me until even the end of this month, and then once I get that done, we can come back in August and see where we go from there. That would be a more, it would make more sense versus us giving a blanket, let's go for a year and see what happens. I don't feel comfortable taking the citizens' money and tying it up for a year and not knowing what our variables are.
What I know is that I'm not probably, I'm not going to get a letter of commitment without an appraisal. I'm not gonna get loan documents or anything like that from the bank without an appraisal. And the appraisal is not gonna be completed by Friday. What I can get is a letter of intent. And if that's good enough for you or if that's not good enough for you, then that's something that I could get very easily. So if that's what I need, then I can do that.
All right, I have a few more questions and Councilmember Arp on the phone. But Councilmember Jensen and then Arp and Hair.
Okay, so my take on this is, I understand that you need this letter of intent to get to move where you need to move. And you're waiting on the appraisal is what I'm hearing. I think the way that we're all talking right now and the way that I'm feeling everybody is, I don't think it's gonna pass. So I would like to make an amendment to the motion that we put a six-month timeline on it. And you should be able to get your appraisal, you should be able to get your appraisal by then. There is enough movers and shakers on your board that can help you make this happen.
Are you talking in construction timeframe or letter of credit or letter for the line?
The commitment that this is what's gonna happen. But I'm again with the mayor, I think we voted on this four or five times and we all want it to happen. But I can support it if it has a six-month timeline.
Okay.
And I would like to amend the motion if somebody would, if Mr. Crisp would allow that, Councilmember Crisp would allow that.
Before we do that, I'd like a chance to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, coming to you. All right, so we'll come back to Mr. Jensen. Mr. Arp, Councilmember Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listen, a lot of thoughtful dialogue tonight, but the reality is, when you're dealing with banks, nothing goes quickly. And I think by constraining Seed with a timeline of six months, 90 days or whatever, we make it more difficult for them to try to secure the financing they need. So if we want them to be successful, I think we need to give them a year. Now, I say a year with no additional money, a year without an additional day, a year to get it done, or we need to get that money back and move on. But we've been at this now for a while. I just feel like if we're gonna do less than a year, then let's just not do anything and train their ability to get bank financing which they need.
Okay, you finished, Councilmember Arp?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Councilmember Hair?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to hear once again our city manager's thought on what he was just saying about the funding. Say what you stated again, Mr. Hewitt, as far as the funding, as far as pulling any funding back or being able to recoup it back. Go ahead, sir, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Hair. At present, I don't know that we have an identified use for the $350,000, it's something that's waiting. It has been a project that past councils and this council has supported. If we were dealing only with an issue of time, where they needed an additional year to finish the project from today, that is one issue. But at present, they do not have approved building plans from us. They have not pulled a building permit and they do not have a driveway permit. There are significant milestones ahead. And while I appreciate, as I've shared as council, the great work that Seed does. There is no other organization in this community that does what Seed does. They have a track record that is, it's simply amazing to think that it is a nonprofit. But they do amazing work and we enjoy partnering with them. But here, less than 30 days, 45 days before this contract, which was a year extension already, we are talking about an appraisal of a building. We're talking about a loan commitment versus a letter of intent. I would request that the council feel comfortable in giving them the year extension. But I would, given where we've been so far, I am concerned that the project, even if you give them a year, that we will be here, because it is a very difficult site to develop. It is a very difficult site to develop. It is a great location, but between two active railroad lines, that was one of the impediments that came forward. But I'm having worked with Seed and Mrs. Zabarski, if anybody can make it happen, I'm committed and believe that she can. But I think that as some have said, six months, I agree with her. If six-month extension only means that we're gonna be here talking about this in six months. There is at present, no designs on the money, $350,000, but that's because we've had it tied up and committed to this project. So at this point, I would say that if you give a year extension, staff will work very hard to review and refine the contract we have for an extension with certain milestones. I'm sure that Seed and Mrs. Zabarski would be happy to come back every 90 days or give us a written report every 90 days. But the site is a very challenging site. And given how far they have to go, if you give them less than a year, I don't see it being successful. Do you, Mrs. Zabarski, see it differently? I don't know if I answered your question fully, Mr. Hair, but the money right now is available. They have not completed in the current contract what we believe, as the staff believes, would satisfy that first drawdown. And so if the motion is an extension of the contract, we would also ask that council would honor the kind of the three tranches of money that we're talking about drawing down, that's in the draws of money, which is in the contract, which is also part of your agenda package.
Let me ask this. If the one year council members is extended tonight, where are we on attaching within the scope for that $350,000 that we're speaking of tonight that certain, well, these particular benchmarks are met in order for these draws to start to be released? Can we have some discussion with that? Because I will feel better in understanding our path from that direction, please.
I would like to say a couple of words about the driveway. The, we don't have any problems with the driveway. All of the information was submitted to DOT. We would not have been able to get an address for that location without having access to the property. And so, the final certificate from DOT is just as simple as they requested from the engineer this week to have five copies of the plan, and then we'll have our certificate.
And just as I close, I just want to say this. I'm very, I've been very supportive with Seed from, I think, Ms. Ray was.
I know this is business, it's not personal, I know.
And I was there with the ribbon cutting in the very beginning, so please don't take that.
And we have been through several TRC reviews with the engineering department. So in the planning and zoning, so they have seen these plans. There was a change in parking that the engineer is submitted to, is submitting to the city, planning and zoning as well. So I know that those are the outlying pieces. And I apologize, on our contract, it says bid documents, so that's what we turned in. So that's what we did with that, with that piece. But we haven't drawn down any money, so to speak.
So we have a couple of second-round folks here. Councilmember Chris?
Mr. Mayor, they need a year. We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money. We're not talking millions of dollars. Somebody said somebody being tired of, man, we got all kind of money in the general fund.
Well, Doug has been misleading us.
Let me hear what I'm saying now. I'm being serious now. Stay with me. I'm with you. We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money. We're not talking about handing it to seeds all at one time either. I know how these banks operate, okay? I've had to do business with them. And the wheels turn very slowly in these banks. But if she's got a year's commitment to show them that the city is with her for a year, that advances her ability to secure the funds. Listen to me on this point. Three years ago, there was a building across the street by all rights and privileges. We should have torn it down, should have been demolished. We even blocked the sidewalk because masons was falling off the building because it was a safety hazard. And citizens in this city attacked us because we were demolishing their properties. And yet we allowed the Prince Charles to stand because we had some vision that eventually it was gonna become something. If we had torn it down three years ago when we were this close, taken a vote to demolish it, we wouldn't have a $110 million project on our hands right now. We're talking a small amount of money here. Let's give the lady the hundred, the year. Let's give her the incremental monies. And if we don't see progress after the first increment, as Councilman Wright said, man, we can start playing hardball with Seed.
Well, so I'm a little confused now. I think that the motion I heard was to extend the time. It didn't have any money attached to it, okay.
But I think we made a previous commitment, didn't we, Mr. City Manager? On the financing, okay, in increments.
So.
We made that commitment before.
I understood, I was saying. And then we've advanced $100,000 of that commitment.
Already.
A year ago.
Yes.
Okay, so now, here we are.
I said earlier, this evening, hold the money.
Okay, all right, so that's where I'm getting clarity at.
That's what I said earlier, upstairs, y'all heard it?
Well, no, I just heard what you said was give them the money.
If they show the progress that we anticipate, as Councilmember.
All right, so I'll go to Councilmember Jensen. Look, I think it's only reasonable that you ask for benchmarks, okay? I mean, it's unreasonable to take the taxpayers' dollars and to give a blank check. We don't do it for anybody else. I don't care how much you support it or not. We love Seed, but it's reasonable that we ask for benchmarks. Like, I'm questioning now, if this has been going on three years, why an appraisal was just now ordered and why that hadn't been done? So why is that?
There was one done in 2012. It's just not good enough for the banks right now.
Yeah, no, they're not gonna take a three, four-year-old appraisal, absolutely not, six years.
We didn't think that the, we didn't think that the project, this part of the project was gonna be $1.1 million. We just didn't, we just didn't.
No, I'm not talking about your cost of construction, but things that you have to do to borrow money or to get, do business with banks are appraisals, title searches, things like that. The plans that Doug is referencing, like, who's handling the administrative barriers? Because none of this works if you miss one of those benchmarks with the lenders because they have a checklist of what they're looking for.
But that's what we're going through right now. All of those things that you're talking about is what we're going through right now. Last year was the first time we were able to get that ball rolling. And so we've been going through all of those benchmarks this year. And so there has been that progress. Before, no, there wasn't that progress because we were told that we had to cross over the railroad tracks in order to have the space. And so when that fell through, before you were doing the Ray Avenue extension, then we went back to the original plans, which was to use our driveway.
Okay, Councilmember Jensen, and then we'll look for some action on this motion, y'all.
Okay, first of all, I'm taking back my amendment to the motion, because nobody seconded. But, I know, but Mr. Crisp did. So I'm gonna go back to, I'm okay with the year. I had a lot of the questions that the mayor had, but I do know that banks change what they need every day. And I do understand the appraisal, that you did have one in 12, is what you're telling me. As I was sitting here speaking to Mayor Protem Moan, he remembered in his head, because he does remember everything, that, and that's why I asked him the question, is that you did come to us in March and you did tell us. So it's not like.
And I would be working on all, yes.
Yes, so you were keeping us up to date. And I think I've been on it so long that you just lose the timeframe. So this isn't your first time coming to us. You came to us in March, June. So we're at three months, and I commend you for that. So I am gonna say that I am supportive of Mr. Crisp, Councilmember Crisp's motion and that we just, you just keep in contact with us. And if you can, maybe every three months, every six months, and maybe we can help the ball rolling because I think everybody up here is a cheerleader for Seed.
Thank you.
All right, so council, we've had a couple rounds of discussion. Look for action on the motion. Mr. Crisp, you wanna restate your motion for clarity? Okay. All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Crisp. Mr. Arp, you still consistent with the second, so. All right, council, look to you for action for, you have a question, sir? So the discussion phase is over. Yes, sir. I think it's time to rock and roll. All right.
Are we voting, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, but we have, I need to reset the lights, hold on a second. Because we had a couple people that pressed two buttons. All right. Yes, calling for the vote now, yeah. Uh, Councilmember Arp, your vote?
Please.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is four in favor of extension, five against. And now, since I'm chairing the meeting, I cannot make a motion, but I'll suggest to my colleagues, that motion fails as presented. If there are conditions attached to that extension, certain time barriers, terms of obtaining permits, getting the documentations in by a certain time. I just didn't wanna open any commitment. I could support that. Mr. Manager, you had some.
Yes, sir. If we take it, I guess, step by step, I recommend that the council is interested that it be a year. So that's the first. I think in hearing you just now, Mr. Mayor. I think, hearing you just now, Mr. Mayor, it is what type of time commitments we could have in place. I would probably break that down by the quarter, that within ninety days, they would have gone through and be able to pull permits, the designs would have been approved for construction by our staff, and that really does start the ball rolling. That's something that between the architect and city staff, they can do. It doesn't require any, any help from the bank. And then we would be able to condition any of the other activities, the other two milestones after, after that, as well as the drawdowns. But in doing the one-year extension, and again, if you authorize the staff that understanding where you are, the first one for us is really having construction documents which are buildable. They're already bid, bidded, but we want to make sure that everything, particularly it's a complete renovation of a building. But if you give a year, is the council's expectation that within a year or before July 31st of 2019, that we have a CO in place, a certificate of occupancy? If that is basically almost twelve and a half months, that you would have, the building would be open, will be available for use for a certificate of occupancy? If that is your interest, then, and would ask, is that, would that meet your interest, Mrs. Sabarsky?
Yes, it would.
So, so July 31st?
I'd probably live with that. We'd just have to get it moving.
Right, but if y'all will, if council is so inclined, we can modify the existing agreement. Council gives a green light for the July 31st of nineteen, and then on your meeting on June 25th, we would have a revised agreement under administrative reports. But if I'm understanding correctly, she, Seed really does need council to say, you're giving them an extension, and that you're not pulling back any of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as long as certain requirements are met. And we can refine those requirements that would be doable by Seed, but also, I think, would give several members of the council the comfort level that this is not a project that you'll be here next year this time, talking about in some form or fashion.
You'll be eating food there.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Mr. City Manager. So I'm in agreement with that, that, yes, that we do extend, give them the twelve months with the conditions.
Mr. Manager, if I heard you correct, you're going to have that for adoption at 25th meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
So that'll give them an opportunity to write exactly what the conditions look like.
But tonight, what I would, what I think they need is a commitment from council to go to July 31st of 2019 for the full three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, subject to us having an agreement...
That will be presented on 25th meeting.
Presented on 25th. Would that be sufficient for you, that vote?
That will work.
Mr. Jensen, is that you with a question, or you making a motion too?
That is exactly what I was going to say.
I heard you say that.
I said it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so that's, Ms. Jensen said just that, and then there's a second.
One of our, Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
Any motion to re-ballot this has to come from a person who voted nay.
Yeah, and I voted against, but I can't make the motion, so...
You can't, but someone else...
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
That's what I was just trying to put in place.
So, so Mr. Hair, bringing it back for reconsideration?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So I'm making the motion now that we give them the extension to, with the...
Hold on, Madam Attorney?
So first, we need a motion for reconsideration. Vote on that motion, and then let Mr. Hair make his motion.
Okay, so we need two motions.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion for reconsideration.
Of that item, okay. All right, so there's a motion by Councilmember Wright, is there a second for reconsideration?
Second.
There's a second by Councilmember Hair. Okay, all those in fa, council, I'll look to you for votes for reconsideration.
I thought it was more several red lights up there than just me.
Mr. Arp, are you voting in favor of reconsidering?
It's very difficult to hear, so somebody, please, tell me what we're doing.
So, Mr. Arp, there's a motion on the floor for reconsideration of the item related to the Seed incubator.
It's to reconsider the motion that just fell.
Yes, with conditions.
To reconsider the item.
With conditions.
Okay, green.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous for reconsideration.
There will be a, an additional motion as it relates to that item.
So now, Mayor, if I'm, oh. So if I'm correct, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to need some help here with the conditions, but that I make a motion that we, we give them the extended time for twelve months with the conditions...
That'll be presented on the 25th.
Yeah, that's going to be presented on what date?
At your June 25th meeting.
At our June 27th meeting. On our June 25th meeting.
All right, so that's a motion by...
Second that, Mr. Mayor.
It's a motion by Councilmember Hair, second by Councilmember Wright.
Can you restate the motion?
So the motion was to...
Recon...
To reconsider extending the year with conditions that will be brought back at the June 25th meeting for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council, it's been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I don't like voting for things that are open-ended. And while in principle, I understand what we're trying to do, we're going to vote for a measure tonight that's going to set a condition of twelve months, but then we're going to come back and have to vote on conditions again on the 25th. I don't, you know, I don't know what those conditions are tonight, but I'm voting on them. To me, there's just something, either we vote tonight for something, or we just tabled this till the 25th.
Mr. Manager, you have some clarity on it?
As we did the last time, it was a contract that was...
We're having a very hard time here.
Okay, it was a contract between the city and Seed. And so the proposal that I floated was that council authorize me to make, to extend the contract until July 31st or 30th of 2019, and that the amount still be the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What I propose to bring back on the 25th, under administrative reports, is to tell you the three drawdowns, what those look like, and the conditions associated with them. The only thing that I see right now is that in the first drawdown, we need greater clarity, and that clarity is, is that construction documents to us mean that, when it was drafted, that it also means that those be approved to be built. And right now, they are saying that they have construction documents in hand from their architect and engineers, and that they have put that out to bid. But at the moment, those aren't buildable because they have not been approved by the city to be built. I believe that that can be accomplished within ninety days, but pretty much what I'm asking y'all to do is to give the same contract, but allow us to add greater clarity into those three drawdowns which were there. Even if council wants to approve the agreement on the 25th, what I'm hearing Mrs. Sabarsky say is that she needs council to vote to say, "We are going to give three hundred and fifty thousand in the three draws to support this project with an extension of the contract to be modified by July 31st of 2019."
And so just for clarity, that's no additional money, that's the money that's been agreed to be issued?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager.
All right, you clear on that, Mr. Arp? We're going to take action on that motion. Any further discussion? All right, council, look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All right, thank you, Mrs. Sis, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Look forward to some positive things from you. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.